Right. Like the movie did, it's like marry like hundreds of people.
Very with the people and all good.
Okay, I started. And that is not going to be your Jefferson.
Understood.
Yep, we have two minutes on English.
Okay.
Okay, see if I don't start. Well, John, we'd love to.
Yeah, some time while the tears. There you have four.
Very accomplished drink.
True, though, we know those.
Oh.
Actually, no, I never read.
I think that she doesn't mean that.
Exactly. No, she she didn't take that as a threat, also she like. And so she's. Yeah, but mostly the hand and the third region.
Yeah, and so that's that's question today is I just would have done that having. So, um, both sides here. Um, how to know this online, for some point, you have to continue to, um, it's advertising. And then if I choose. No, we're not allowed any message, like, so.
Yeah, great. On that, so.
Bill, ready when you are, 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay. We're recording, we are recording.
Thank you.
Great. And we're off mute.
Okay.
All right, I'll open up this meeting of the major planning board. Uh, today's date is June 11th, 2024, the time is 7:01 PM. Uh, this meeting is being held uh in hybrid format, which means members of the board or members of the public applicants can participate here in town hall or virtually through the Zoom link. Uh, tonight, we have five members present here in town hall. Uh, please note, this meeting is being recorded. Uh, let's skip item one, we'll turn to item two. Uh, this will be a continuance or reopening of the public hearing from fourteen sixteen Hillside Street. Uh, I will reopen the hearing for fourteen sixteen Hillside Street. Uh, Bill, you wanna update the planning board on where this is at?
Yes, we continued this at our last uh planning board meeting. It's a request for um a multi-unit conversion of a existing two unit. Uh, the applicant indicated that he was, he had was not ready with materials. Uh, and he's having some issues locating a um additional parking. Um, and he's here if uh you uh wanna ask him any questions of the.
Just yeah, I hear that you're asking for a continuance?
Yes.
Okay, that's correct, thank you. Um, did you and Bill talk about a date for a continuance?
July, we're next meeting is July ninth, is it?
We'd be ready for the July meeting.
Let me see, it's July, yeah, July ninth.
Okay.
Is the next one.
If the request is to continue to July ninth.
Correct.
Unless there's any other feedback from the board at this time. I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to the July ninth at seven PM.
I'll second that, thank you, Jim.
Okay.
All in favor to continue, please raise your hand. It's five zero to continue, Bill.
Thank you.
Mr. Chansky.
Thank you.
So let's open up the voice. Um, Bill, we have not opened up, the next item here, item three is the public hearing.
That's correct.
Well, should I open it up and continue?
No, no, I I I think because it was advertised late. Uh, we did notice it by mail, but it was advertised in a newspaper late. So, um, the uh folks are here from the um, the uh one Powder Mill Road PP gas station. This is an unusual case uh in that um the the applicant is appearing before the board as a sort of a cleanup for um their existing permit, but they're not required to. They are required to get a permit from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, but the staff did recommend that they come um to the planning board and they agreed to come as well. Uh, so if they will be continued to the July ninth, uh, they're going to be heard at the zoning board hearing of June twenty-sixth, so that would probably be better order anyway.
Um, procedurally, do we need to continue?
And Jim, that's a Jim would know that one, that's a good question, cuz it's it's, we haven't opened it yet, we just continue the item to be opened.
Let me think about that for a second. I don't think it exists cuz they weren't noticed, so. Can't happen.
You were already, it had been published?
It was not published, it was noticed, so the mailing went out.
Always too soon.
To do butters.
And you have to, uh, uh, you actually have to open the hearing and then continue it.
Okay. And then there'll be the, the time will be elapsed. Well, let's see.
But if it wasn't advertised correctly, can we actually open the hearing?
Oh, that's a good question.
That's why I asked.
Yeah. Uh, well, if we continue the item, if we just continued the whole thing and uh because of the advertising delay. And it was, anybody that was noticed that was here, that was involved, we do have some people online. So that if uh they were here for this item, uh, they'd be aware that it was continued to the next.
Yeah.
Meeting anyway, that's probably the neatest way to do it, I guess, so you do.
Yeah, that probably, yeah.
Yeah, so if the board's okay with that, I would recommend July ninth.
So we we continue this?
Yeah, just continue it without opening it.
Okay, so we reschedule this item for?
Yeah.
For July ninth, okay. Um, I'll make a motion to reschedule the uh public hearing for one Powder Mill Road to July ninth at seven PM. Second that, all in favor of the board for the rescheduling of this item, please raise your hand. Side zero, Bill, for the rescheduling of the public hearing for one Powder Mill Road.
Gio, uh, I'll be in touch maybe to- tomorrow or Thursday. Um, I'm gonna be having, we're on some offline meetings with the boards, uh, I'll just touch base with you real quick, okay? Thank you. All right.
Good.
Yep, perfect.
Okay. Um, let's turn to item four, the public hearing for eleven Main Street. Um, I will open up the hearing for eleven Main Street. This is a petition filed by the owner applicant of, um, listed here as twenty-one standard LLC. Um, same care of Bull Finch and um from Boston. This is a subject property is Emerson Hospital at eleven Main Street, it's a two-story structure located in the central business district and the DOD, the downtown overlay district. Um, so I opened up uh hearing, uh, Billy, wanna give the board?
Sure.
Um, actually, let's turn it to the applicant for introductions for second zoom, that you guys might be here for this particular, and if you mind just introducing yourself for the record, and then I'm gonna allow, allow Bill to give the board primarily.
Sure, um, I'll go first, uh, Dave Liberdoni, um, I'm the counsel for the owner applicant from Donald McFarlane and Fish.
I'm Mike Wilcox, managing director and lead saying of the Bull Finch Company.
I'm Robert Trey, Director of Senior, Senior Director of Facilities and Operations for Emerson Hospital.
Yes, thanks, Ken.
And we also have, um,
Annie Gorman, yes, Senior Project Engineer from BHB.
And on behalf of the town, um, Bill Scully from, um, Kimley Horn.
Um, so Bill Scully is representing?
Us.
Okay, uh, as peer review?
Yes.
Okay, um, Bill, would you mind introducing yourself for the record?
But you're muted, Bill.
You might need to help him unmute.
Okay.
Uh, again, uh, Bill Scully, I'm Senior Project Manager with Kimley Horn, uh, out of Waltham, Massachusetts. Well, and uh, on the peer review, I'll call for the.
Thanks, Joe. Um, Bill, you wanted, uh, fifth board on what about?
Sure, this was the former Walgreens building, uh, as, uh, which has been Emerson now for quite a while. Uh, if you recall, it was built under, originally under downtown overlay district uh dimensional standards. At the time, um, it required a second floor for part of the design review. Uh, since Emerson, uh, I'm sorry, Wal- Walgreens never used the second floor and uh Emerson has uh been in this location for some time and has been working with the town to activate the second floor for medical uses, office uses. Um, the notable uh things about this project, I don't, I'll let the applicant, I'll give you some of the highlights, but in general, um, this board granted uh waivers, the DOD waivers, given the proximity to the parking lot. It was, we didn't want another sea of asphalt there when so close to the, to the municipal lot, and this is primarily, uh, um, uh, let probably less traffic than when Walgreens was using it. Um, so, um, the applicant has prepared a um application that would amend the existing site plan. Um, which is, this is pretty much limited to the parking lot um changes. Uh, and the special permit um is for a uh parking uh relief. And um, as the board's well aware, this is kind of a commonplace DOD um procedure that we're doing now. So with that, I'll turn it over to David and and um, the board can uh, ask any questions, I should point out that Mr. Scully um, who was as, is pretty new to this, but I think he's had time to go over this, and it was relatively, um, uh, last minute for him, and I appreciate his getting uh together for this and and uh having an opportunity to uh have him present tonight is uh for the board.
Thank you, um, Mr. Liberdoni, Tim, I believe you have a presentation for tonight?
Yep, yeah, I have you queued up, do you want to um run it right off of my computer?
That's fine, I think.
I put it on here. Yeah, sure, I'll give it to, I'll give you the whole. Let me just look at it going. Gonna make sure this is yours, I guess first.
That looks it.
And everybody should be able to share, see this, can you see this, Bill, on Annie?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, likewise.
Okay.
There you go, just use this, and look, is that right?
Yeah.
And uh, I'm gonna continue, we have to hit, uh, enable editing. Or not. All right.
Thanks, thank you very much, Bill, some time, and thank you, the members of the board for having us tonight. Uh, just want me to say, we do have the um check for the?
Oh.
Peer review?
Oh, yeah, I'll put that in. Right.
It's on camera, so.
All right, um, thank you for having us tonight, uh, we already introduced ourselves, um, but we had just representation from the, the owner of the property, Bull Finch, um, the proposed tenant, which would be um Emerson Hospital, Hospital and um and Annie Gorman, again, is our uh Senior Project Engineer from BHB, who, who uh put together the, the parking site plan that you have. Um, just wanna go over a little bit of, of history on the site, as, as Bill touched on. Uh, this is located within the downtown overlay district. Um, it was uh originally permitted as a two-story, twenty-one thousand square foot commercial building with retail on the first floor and warehouse and office on the second floor. Um, that original two thousand eight approval granted a parking waiver to um permit twenty-one onsite parking spaces when thirty-one would have been required, and again, you know, it's because of the, um, it's next door to the, the large municipal parking lot. Um, you know, although the building was constructed, Walgreens actually never opened or operated. Um, they ended up entering into a sublease with Emerson Hospital for a portion of the first floor in twenty eighteen. Um, and that's, you know, Emerson's been operating there since. Um, the current owner acquired the property in uh April twenty nineteen, a little over five years ago, and um after that acquisition and before tonight, um, Emerson did some uh parking lot uh reconfigurations that I'll, I'll show you uh on the next slide, so. This was a survey that we had have done from the original acquisition, twenty nineteen, and at this time, there were, um, just gonna leave this window, so. Um, there were twenty-nine, uh, or twenty-one onsite parking spaces. Um, and, and um after Emerson took over the sublease, this is how the parking lot exists today. Um, they actually ended up taking out that pharmacy driveway aisle and put in some additional parking spaces there, so today, there's actually twenty-nine onsite parking spaces, two of which are uh ADA accessible spaces uh near the building entrance here. Um, so just to give you, and then, you know, just to orient you, again, this is the municipal parking lot right next door. Um, so what the, what we're here tonight is, um, Emerson and the, and the owner have have been working on an arrangement for Emerson to fully lease the entire building and expand their medical offices. Uh, doing so, um, triggers uh different parking requirements for the building. Um, and so we're, we're seeking an amendment of our uh parking waiver under that two thousand eight special permit to allow for um twenty-seven onsite parking spaces. Um, there's two less spaces because of some of the improvements we're proposing, and we'll go into that in a, in a moment. Um, we're also seeking just to update the site plan with what we've submitted to the board. And there are a few um specific, you know, technical parking standards in the zoning bylaw that we're seeking a leave for. Uh, mainly to try and maximize the parking on site that's there and to make sure that what, um, the additional parking that was put in, in that pharmacy driveway is compliant, and so. Um, so I just wanna take you through the four different improvements that we're doing. Um, the first is to add one more ADA accessible parking space. Um, for to, uh, for a use that requires fifty, uh, fifty to sixty uh parking spaces, we're required to have three uh ADA accessible parking spaces. And even though we're not gonna be able to provide all of those spaces on site, we still felt it was it was um necessary to provide the required ADA spaces on site, so we, we're proposing to add one more. Um, we're also proposing improvements to a pedestrian path that exists today between the municipal parking lot and the property. Um, I'll show you an image of, of what that looks like in a moment, and um, you know, basically just to make that an accessible path um for, for uh visitors who would be um, patients going into the medical office. Um, near that path, we would be also modifying some curbing to maintain a minimum twenty-foot wide driveway aisle um going through the parking lot, and then a couple of um traffic calming measures to try and improve pedestrian safety at the site. Uh, so this is the, the site plan that's been submitted, I think I can exit this section. Just zoom in on a couple of items, um. So this is the, um, so just to take you through, I think you all have a copy, but um, this is where we, we would be adding that um additional uh ADA accessible parking space. Um, this is that pedestrian path here that um, that we would be improving to make it, you know, taking out the curving, making it accessible. Um, this island here, it kinda juts out and it creates a, a pinch point in the, in the um parking lot, so we wanna just take that curving in a bit to maintain that twenty-foot wide width. And then, um, the final improvement again is some signage and a, a speed bump as some traffic calming measures. I'll go back to the presentation. You can see here, this is how that pedestrian path looks today. Um, so we just wanna actually improve this and make it much more usable. Um, and the intent is to work with, with the town, um, you know, to, to make sure that, you know, an appropriate license agreement or whatever approvals we need to, to do this work on town property is, is permitted. Um, we would also be proposing to move this temporary structure that I believe is used for the major open table just to relocate it and, and have a more um, uh friendly pedestrian experience here. Um, this uh slide, and, and we go into more detail in our cover letter, is the um additional um zoning relief from the parking standards in the bylaw. Um, the first is, you know, just to quickly summarize these. Um, that parking that is on the side of the building where that pharmacy driveway was, we're proposing to have those spaces be slightly smaller than what's required under zoning. Um, that, that minimum driveway width, uh zoning requires twenty-four feet. Um, we're proposing to have a twenty-foot um width there. Uh, that's consistent with um state regulation, state fire code regulation. Um, the, because of that curving, we're taking in to maintain that twenty-foot wide driveway aisle. Um, the parking next to that curving is, has, has to be slightly reduced. Um, and then the final one is, instead of having twelve-foot wide ADA spaces, we have eight-foot wide plus a five-foot access aisle um next to those spaces, which again is consistent with um architectural access board regulations. Um, we submitted with our application a parking study that BHB done, did um to study the usage of the uh public parking near the site. Um, obviously, it's mainly the municipal lot next door, but there's also street parking near the site and a couple of other um municipal lots. Um, the general takeaway is that even with this um medical office use, expanded medical office use, there should be ample parking available um to accommodate the um, the demand of both employees of the site and, and patients visiting. Happy to go into more detail on that if you, if you have questions. Um, we feel that this zoning relief is, is appropriate again, because, you know, there should be ample parking um off-site to, to meet the parking demand of this expanded medical office use. We also think that this is a very, um, you know, in- important expansion of Emerson's Hospital's presence and downtown mayor and will hopefully lead to other economic activity, which is consistent with the goals of the downtown overlay district. Um, the couple of the improvements we're proposing, particularly the pedestrian path, is also consistent with the downtown overlay district's goals and policies to make a more pedestrian safe and um friendly experience. And um the dimension relief we're asking for from the parking standards, again, is, are all to, you know, try to maximize our onsite parking, but also are, you know, consistent with state regulations and um is, is, you know, in some respects approving what's already there today. And finally, just to, to, to make a, a point, um, you know, we're not proposing any changes to the building itself or the exterior of the building, there will, there'll be, you know, improvements going on inside for the Emerson's expanded use, but, but nothing changing about the um square footage, so. Um, I will, happy to take the board's questions and um, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Liberdoni, appreciate that. Um, and Bill, if I have a misunderstood, um, we don't have a peer review at this moment, but uh, Bill Scully is here to uh observe the discussion and then provide a formal peer review later on, is that correct?
Um, I believe he'll uh provide a summary of everything, but the idea was that to prepare uh if, unless there's something um glaring that he saw, was to kinda give the board a sense of his level of comfort with the proposal. I don't wanna speak for Bill, but.
Bill Scully, may I ask if you have any feedback at this moment that would be relevant to share with the board?
Sure, um, yeah, I, I think so, um. Well, and I didn't have a chance to talk with Bill before the meeting. Uh, we've been sort of on the rush this afternoon, looking at everything. Uh, but again, uh, I, I think overall the plan that uh VHB prepared, um, it's workable and, and serves the purpose of, in terms of uh again, balancing access with parking supply and making some pedestrian improvements. That said, and, and what I'll do is follow up this meeting uh with a, just a brief letter, just outlining some things. So we just got some items that uh the board may want to consider in terms of uh uh enhancements maybe to the plan, uh. Uh, they're fairly minor, but I think they enhance the safety aspect, uh, and, and uh you all, uh, on the applicant's side, can correct me if I missed something, uh, you know, since we, we haven't been on this long. Um, couple of things that we wanted to do, we really like the uh accessible walkway from the public lot through the site and making that workable, uh. I think, um, if I read the plans right, it's, is to stay the same, like scored concrete uh color that you have on the site now. Uh, we would suggest adding twelve-inch white uh crosswalk edge lines uh on each side of that walkway in the parking lot, given that it's a, you know, it's gonna be a more active um medical facility and a lot of use with the uh public block that uh this crossing could become uh well-used, and we just want good visibility of that, of that center area, the people that'll be crossing. Um, also, um, on the speed bump, um, good idea, I mean, it certainly slows traffic down and discourages uh people who are just cutting through. Um, we would like the applicant to submit to the town for review and approval, the details of that speed bump before going to construction. Uh, we would also like, you, you got that eye where they cut the curb back a little bit to facilitate the width of the eye, that's what the, the bump is. Uh, so you've got, you've got some room there to also place a uh two-sided sign of just warning people in the lot uh that there is a speed bump, like it wasn't clear if they're painting the bump or, or not, I don't, doesn't, doesn't uh bother me whichever way you go, uh, but some kind of want to motors uh needed for the bump. Um, let's see, a couple of other things, um, the uh on the, the driveway out at Summer Street, we didn't see a stop sign there exiting the site, we do see a stop sign on the Main Street side. Um, and it looks like that's a one-way out, not an entrance from Summer Street, and we're looking at the markings, we got that right. And if that's the case, then you should probably put back-to-back signs on that, on the, each side of the drive of do not enter from Summer as well as stop something leaving the, the lot for the, the parking. And lastly, um, I think, is uh, so there's a couple of the new, new spaces, uh, the ninety-degree spaces uh just past the uh speed bump on the left of the plant, uh, which are a little bit undersized, and, and they're probably fine, for, for most cars these days, it's probably fine. Um, one thing that we may want to do, uh, I don't wanna call them compact spaces cuz they're not. but we might put up signs for smaller vehicles, you know, on the ends of each of those spaces, just so that it, it's a little bit narrower than the other spaces. It's a little bit shorter. So again, just information for the, the user. And I think that's I'm looking at my notes. I think that's all I have. But again, you know, in summary, I mean, we have no problem, no major problem with the redesign. And like I said, the connection from the public lot is really good. We, we looked through quickly the parking study and there's certainly a lot of empty spaces available over the course of the day to accommodate the uses here with the vans, whether it's onsite or using public spaces on street or in the lot. And I, I'll just conclude with that. I'll follow up with a brief letter that just documents what I just said.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Mr. Lubidoni, knowing, knowing that Mr. Scully and his team will provide little formal writing and your team can review and respond accordingly. I am also happy to use this time if your team needs any clarity now regarding those comments.
Matt, do you have questions about?
I think it's pretty clear.
Yeah.
I'm assuming Andy understands and agrees.
Andy, any, any questions for Bill or, or any issues, issues that he's recommending?
They all seem pretty reasonable. I look forward to seeing the rest of your comments in your letter, Bill.
All right, no problem. And I apologize for the lateness of, of the review. So I didn't have a chance to communicate to you previously.
No, no, for, for, just, just for awareness, Bill Scully and his team jumped on this pretty quickly. We had another period view lined up. It didn't work out. Mr. Scully is doing us a service by joining this team very fast.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
We appreciate that, Mr. Scully.
Thank you, Bill.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to, would you actually run over the four comments in general? Do you have?
Yeah, we should repeat for the record.
Yeah, because I, I didn't get the last one. That's what it's.
But Bill will provide these in writing.
Yeah. But yeah, if it's, if there's anything else that the board, any other questions for the comments that he had? I didn't.
I don't have any.
I didn't catch the last one.
The ninety degree spots might be compact spots or not compact, but something, you know, certain forming of people that they are maybe smaller than.
Gotcha. That's okay.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to the board for questions or comments instead. Anyone? Well, you're, you're, you're still one here.
No, I think it's, I mean, it's shown as seventy extra spots in the nearby lot, so there's plenty of room to go around.
I have things to say. All right. So first of the question for Bill. No, sir. Open tables temporary structures there, they're currently sitting on non-spots, right? They're on. You know anything about them? Okay. Do you know who, who approved them to be there? Okay, whatever. Great.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I can, I can find out.
No, I, I mean, I just, you know, we've got to find it somewhere else to put them. So this is going to result in the removal of one municipal parking space, correct?
Right.
Striping where the pedestrian access is going to be. Is there a potential snow removal for that pedestrian path?
So that would be something that we would work out in, in the agreement with the town to, to maintain. But I think it would be our intention to, to have to maintain the path.
Great.
Nice question.
Yeah.
Are we, are you envisioning an access agreement?
Either, we would probably want, you know, either an access agreement, license agreement, but something that, you know, I would think the town would want us to, you know, for a long time, take care of that path because it's going to be benefiting the property.
I think that's would be the board's ideal version of this.
Yeah, I did work, uh, speak with, um, this has been in the works for DPW about adding this feature as a, you know, to complement the DOD and meet the intent.
No, it's okay. Yeah, the only pedestrian path sounds great. I think it's Mr. Scully's comment about the strapping being whatever the size would be most visible. I think that's a great idea. Additionally, my only other question we've heard about the speed bump and the signage. I know that there was some mention, I'm sorry, I sort of gotten lost on the, the signage about it being one-way. To make that clearer, is that going to change or is that staying as it is? I'm trying to remember what it is now. Currently, I know that one-way is encouraged, but I don't think it's necessarily. There, there are arrows I know on the ground.
I think there's only arrows.
Okay. So is there going to be signage?
There would be signage at the main street entrance that would say, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it would say, you know, not, not pass through or get through traffic.
Yep.
So the idea is, I don't think we can completely eliminate cut-through traffic, but by having that signage plus a speed bump, not only are you trying to reduce that, but also just increase pedestrian safety with more people coming across the lot.
Yep. And additionally, I would love to see what the speed bump is going to look like if it was the, you know, from, from the view of the pedestrians and the drivers who aren't going to access it right now.
I have a few questions probably for the civil engineers. I see that the speed bump is, it terminates in the center of one of the angled parking spots. Is that reasonable to do?
Me? I mean, not ideal, but we're trying to keep as much sight as possible.
That depends, I suppose, if the speed bump is actually going to be a full twenty feet wide.
There is some conflict with it, and it terminates in the center. I don't usually see that. But something, I think something for the team to consider. So, so Andy, does that make sense? I, I, I'm not giving direction on this, but it's something to consider. That's, that's the best way to do it. The twenty-four drive out does seem tight. Can we, for it, can we put some, some turning visuals on here for some of the emergency vehicles, perhaps a fire truck that would want to turn through? Because I do see that the site looks like it might be getting smaller for the drive aisle?
It's actually getting wider than what it is today. Because when those angled spots were put in where the pharmacy driveway was and you had that, you have that curving that's, that's out near the pedestrian path, that's actually, I think, over like seventeen or eighteen. So that's why we wanted to take in the, the curtain right there at the pedestrian path to make it at least twenty feet, which is what is required under state fire code regulation and what would be permitted with the.
So I agree with that. It's my understanding that the handicap parking spaces have a longer width than what's probably being shown here, longer than the eighteen of the proposed angles. So I'm curious if adding that additional handicap spot with, with that length dimension is actually making the drive aisle smaller. And I don't know if you answered that by looking at the design effects.
Andy, can you, are you able to respond to that?
Drive aisle will be twenty feet wide for the whole length of it. And we, yeah, we can prepare those graphics with the, the emergency vehicle maneuvering through the site.
I presume the concept here is that a fire engine can drive through the system, it will in and drive through if necessary, or at least to access one end of the site.
Yes. That, that I should also, for the, for the accessible parking space we're adding, the, we, it looks longer than the other spaces because you have, where, where the five-foot wide access aisle is only, starts to be five feet wide a certain number of feet as you get away from the building. So that's where we start measuring the, the eighteen-foot length of that space. That's why it looks like it's sort of sticking out. Because we want to make sure that for the minimum length of the parking space, you also have the required width of the access aisle.
But based on actual, how vehicles look, the functional doors of that, they'll most likely push the front of the vehicle closer to the building. So it won't be sticking out as far here.
So for, when we, so back to the walkway, we're calling that accessible. That would be ADA compliant?
Yes.
I think, Bill, we would ask that this be conditioned that materials and designs are approved by DPW.
Yeah, that's, that, that would be, yeah, that would be, yeah. It's a good one.
Is there any signage need for that at all, for that walkway? Any striping needed for the walkway? Would be a question for the design teams.
So we, I don't know, Bill, you caught that. So that was one of the things that we raised. Well, we put into the white stripes for visibility. As opposed to adding signs, you, you might not have, you're not going to have any room on building side of signage. Maybe a little tough on the island side to see the tree there, but that's something that it can probably take a look at.
When I'm looking at the asphalt, the current asphalt condition, it says something about a brick that's in the center of the parking lot. Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, part of the, the, at the car parking lot is, actually, if I go back, I can show you the area. You can see this image. There's this brick that's currently in the parking lot right now. We would not be proposing to, to change that because it actually connects to where the pedestrian path would, would feed into the parking lot.
I'm curious from other board members that aesthetically, we would prefer to see brick through the walkway itself instead of asphalt, which is being listed here.
I don't think it's actually brick. I think it's that weird crest. When they're like-
It's not actually brick.
Crested brick shapes.
It's stamped.
Yes.
Stamped brick.
I don't care. I think I'd rather have white strapping.
There's an image of it. I'm thinking aesthetically, do we want to carries whatever this is continuous through the walkway?
I think that would look nice.
I think it would look better than a mishmash of, of materials. Can, can, can your team consider if that's reasonable, a reasonable request to continue with that material through the walkway? I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not, not sure the constructability of that or the maintenance of that. So those items should be considered. DPW should weigh in as well, of course. I, I can speak for their long-term maintenance plans and what they would like to see. Matching it, smashing it aesthetically, I think would be my priority if possible. I'm also seeing trees here. And is, so I can clearly see the one that's in the center of the photo to the right of the walkway. Is that a tree to the left of the walkway that I'm seeing as well?
Here?
Yeah.
Yes, I don't, I don't think we would be proposing to touch that tree or anything.
So we would not need to disturb any trees on site?
No.
Great. Okay. Those are my comments. Any other comments?
I guess one thing is some of the, just the labels on the plan talks about add alternates and things like that. It might just be good to be definitive one way or the other, signage and the speed bump, for example, is kind of meant to be a pricing plan and the material. If, if we want those signs, I think we just want a plan to say add all those.
Yeah, we don't need a pricing plan. This, this is what you're getting.
Yeah, yeah.
What would you like done on the chat?
Some of the labels have just add alternate
Right.
on the label. And I think if we or the DPW want those signs, then the plan shouldn't say add alternate.
So this is, some of the language here, Bill, is more about pricings from the contractuals for, for contractors. We just need a site plan. That's the proposed site conditions.
And with the updates of the-
With, with, with definitive information on it.
And as, as Mr. Scully discussed, maybe we can think about adding a stop sign to the Summer Street side of the driveway? Since there's no existing one.
This would be leaving the site?
Yeah.
There's no stop sign there? I know it's on the plan, but. Any other questions, thoughts from the board? Let's go to public comments. Bill, would you mind seeing if there's any public comments online? I'll open up public comments. For members that are online, please either use the raise hand feature or turn on your video and raise your hand and we will call any of your public comments. I'll also open up the public comments in the ring here. Let's just see if there's any online first. All right, no public comments online, sir? Well, please note that your public comments, I mean, it must be limited to three minutes and you speaking on topic and directed towards the board.
Thank you. Bill Cranchow, Mockingbird Lane. I just want to make people aware that space in the municipal lot proposed to be eliminated is an EV charging space.
Well, that's not good.
Is that on the other side of the walkway?
Yeah. We're at the one that's going to be striped.
It's not signed, but chargers there, you can see in the picture. There's a new charger. I don't know why there's a new charger.
What's the purpose of eliminating one spot and strapping to existing space?
So that people can walk without, you know, walking, having to walk between that striped spot and the adjacent the concrete retaining wall spot.
You know, I'm curious if, if there's only, this plan shows only three parking spots on that side. I'm seeing one, two, three. I'm wondering. And we can describe it to the team online. But we have the proposed parking space here. There's three. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to angle parking spots so that you get the required access that's needed here. Something to consider.
Or does anyone know which? I think it would be unfortunate to have to deal with the charging spots that were just installed. I wonder if there are any on the, you know, on the adjacent parking area. If one of these is set, it'd be locked off, you know, as the walkway out. But I'm not sure what the setup is there in terms of the I haven't looked at the chargers lately, so.
Andy, I think we've looked at potentially, you know, having that be the space we lose on that side.
Yeah, that is correct. We could use a different, the space, that's right, ninety degrees from it, kind of where, where we move the temporary structure instead of the EV charging space.
Can you see from that picture if there, there, there's not a charger on that side too, right? Look.
Bill, does the applicant have to go to select board since they want to, proposing to eliminate a parking space on the public way?
Yes.
I presume you haven't, you haven't started that process yet. You wanted to come through here first?
Yes.
In the past, Bill, what has, has the select board requested in returning? Anything? Any advice we can give this applicant based on past?
I'll have to, I'll have to coordinate that through DPW with it. In this case, where there's the addition of a pedestrian path, I'm sure that's going to weigh into it, you know, accessibility. But I, I, I don't know exactly.
Now that we're taking over- Now that we're taking over, if the, the proposal here takes over some general area that was being used for other items, um, temporary structures and whatnot. May, maybe there's an opportunity to get a bike rack in here or something similar or other sort of public infrastructure that may help with some of our, um, goals in town, um, police streets goals, uh, accessibility goals. I'm wondering if that space can be utilized for any other reason besides just open pavement? That makes sense.
I think that's something we can look at, um, but I think we would also want to kind of work there with EPW in terms of, you know, making sure that that structure is removed and has enough space. Again, I think we need to know some of those details.
Uh, what I'm suggesting is, something like that makes this a strong application. For sure.
Yeah.
I have no questions. Does anyone have questions on waivers that are being implemented? Bill, Namsor, what's next?
Um, there's, so the, the, the way I would recommend going forward with, uh, um, i- if the board is comfortable making a vote tonight, then, um, my suggestion would be run through, um, the, the, in this case, we have a special permit that's being amended, and um, really is going to be a new special permit, but the board could find for the, um, standard special permit that the findings remain consistent with the existing two thousand eight special permit, or it's two thousand eleven.
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight, right, um, it remains the same, the criteria is met, and, uh, then for the separate finding for the, the DOD special permit criteria, uh, finding remains consistent with, and, um, adds the, uh, additional pedestrian benefit of a, um, accessible, um, path proposed into the public parking lot. Uh, so, and again, the, the, these findings were already made in two thousand eight, but they've been up revised as, uh, contained. Uh, the special permit, the difference, uh, in the special permit, the new one would be that it's, um, it's for a reduced parking space to, um, requiring twenty-six spaces, but it's an increased parking space from what's there now. But it's still, the, they're still authorizing less than the fifty-three that are required. Uh, and the site plan amendment, uh, would be, uh, for the this May thirteenth, uh, site plan to be updated, um, as, uh, directed here by the board, and if the board was comfortable, um, um, you know, we could, we could either, uh, uh, approve, uh, staff could approve the changes and verify that they're good, or the, we could just distribute it to the board if they want. Um, the, with the, the goal being that we, we, uh, close the hearing tonight if possible. If, if the board's uncomfortable with it, then we just have it for our next.
Um, my, I think there's enough, any questions? I'd just like to see this tightened up before we close.
Got it.
Um, a couple, a couple of questions, and I'd like to see the full peer review first.
Okay.
I don't want to close the hearing until I see the formal peer review completed.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
When would you, when should we continue to?
Could everything be done July ninth at our next meeting? You think?
All right, is there, isn't there a meeting, another meeting in June or?
Not this June, there's not, and the board was, board requires two weeks review time typically and with the peer reviewers. Um, the next one is July ninth.
That's the next bill, maybe we'll be, be prepared then.
Okay.
Um, any further thoughts on the board? Um, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to July ninth at seven PM.
I'll second that.
All in favor for the continuance, please raise your hand. That's four zero to continue to July nine. Uh, thank you, Bill, for, thank you for the very elegant presentation. I thank you, Annie. Thank you, Mr. Scully.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, uh, make a move for boys during this hearing.
Uh, I second to adjourn that hearing. All in favor to adjourn the hearing is over July nine. Please raise your hand. It's four zero to adjourn the hearing.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Um, Bill, do you need a minute or get ready for a planner update?
There's those that are updated.
Hmm?
On the agenda.
Oh, yeah. I, I do, I have a, 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 just a, a brief topic was, um, the, for the powder mill, um, the what I guess would be A, B, C, D, E districts and all that we're going to be working on. I didn't know how the board, we have the drafts, as you've circulated. But I thought, um, now we could do workshop them a little bit, and I didn't know, uh, how the board wanted to do that. Um, but I think that would be good if we, um, if, if it, I don't know if the board wanted to do it in like open session or offline, or we'd had a working group like we did with the, um, accessory dwelling units or something like that, um, so.
Bill, I'm, I'm amenable to having up to two members workshop this themselves with Bill. If anyone wants to volunteer to support that, but only up to two members, of course, because three is.
Three is a crowd.
Three is a battle.
I wouldn't do it.
Okay.
Put this one.
I want to do it. Okay. Well, you guys spoke up first, so.
Okay, so here's the good thing. Tomorrow is a Zoom meeting where the final, we're getting the final, um, I think it's from Sarah.
We thought we had till July.
No, 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 yes, you're correct. We have till July with her. We're getting the, um, but the updates. Oh, wait. If anybody wants to meet, we're having a Zoom meeting tomorrow to discuss this, and we have it set up for one thirty, two thirty on Zoom. So I'll send you, uh, each a meeting, uh, invite, and if you can come, good. If not, it's um, and the goal of the meeting, uh, at this one, this Julie set up, I think Sarah Scott is supposed to be on this, but oh, no. Scratch what I said. The meeting tomorrow at one thirty is to talk about, uh, conservation dimensional concerns on the, to make sure we understand what the Conservation Commission wants. So Julie's going to go over them so that we don't step on any toes from theirs. And that was why I thought it would be a good idea if we want.
Okay, great.
So I'll send you, I, I, I'll get you each an invitation to it, and if you want to come, good. If not, uh, Julia will be there and we'll recap it all for you. There was some confusion on that, so I didn't want to. You guys are going to be stuck with me again, huh, in the subgroup? Wow. And that is all I have. Um, I have a meeting Friday scheduled with, um, the state about, um, uh, finalizing the overlay, the, uh, MBTA communities, this, uh, stuff, so hopefully, uh, we get everything good with them. I'll, I'll let you all know how that works.
Is it anything that's changing or it's just?
No, they, they, they're right now, they're, I, they're saying, I think, what they're going to say is we have a couple of areas that won't count towards your MBTA communities because they're entirely unbuildable. And.
Like whatland or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so it'll probably be a couple of acres out. I think I know the two acres, but we're well over, so it wouldn't. But I'll feel better when I get that verified, so I'll let you all know about that.
And this is just part of the regular routine approval process that they do with each town that passes against zoning, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, this is a little extra. I asked for, I've been trying to get on the inside of this, so we don't, I don't like the surprise part of it, so I've been trying to work ahead with it. So it's a little extra meeting.
But at some point, we will have officially be compliant with the Commonwealth.
Yeah, oh, yeah, when, when, as soon as we are, I believe me.
We're all going to hear that.
Believe me, you'll know.
Anything else?
And that's all I have. It's quality, not quantity.
Jim? No? You want to do the honors?
I'm here. Oh. I'm here, um, on behalf of the Tree Committee, and we just wanted, this being the end of the fiscal year, to express our appreciation for the communication that you've, um, worked with us this year and, and alerted us to possibilities that people have known about for work in town, and hope to continue this, and we're just absolutely pleased with how this is going. Good, good. Thank you. So I wanted that in the record.
Oh, yeah, it's been great for you.
Um, Jim?
All right. Um, Mr. Shannon, I would like to make a motion to be closed of this meeting.
Thank you, Jim. I'll second that. All in favor to close, please use your hands. Five zero to close.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Lou. How was, uh, how was the tree planting in the Arbor Day?
Uh, we're watering a lot crazy Pagoda Dogwood, um, um, Jane Eldridge came and, uh, Neil Peterson, um, did the honors of putting.